Hello.
Hey, Bill. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Okay, so we're missing, is John there? John Bernardo, I see his, I don't see his picture. I see his name just but his picture is not there. John Bernardo.
I wonder if that's actually him. There's Amy.
Oh, maybe it's not him?
Yeah.
Okay. How about Mr. Rosen? Is he coming?
He was.
There's Amy.
Yep, I just moved her over.
Okay.
Rick, how are you?
Good, Amy. How about you?
Good, thanks. I'll, I just want to say one quick thing to the board at the end of tonight's agenda regarding Zoom meetings and in-person meetings going forward.
Okay, you want to say it at the end or the beginning? We'll forget it. We'll forget at the end, you know, so and everyone wants to run out of here in the end, so.
Then I'll make it quick. I'll make it quick when we start.
Well, why don't we wait until we get everybody here though? So we, I'm sure it's something very important, so I don't want anyone to miss it. All of, all of your words of wisdom are very important to us, so.
Some, some may be more important than others.
I want to take copious notes while you're. We're, so we're still missing a few people here. Do, have we figured out, is that John, the Jay Bird Bernard?
I don't think it is.
It's not? Okay.
Because that's not his email. I'm going to move him back to.
Okay. Okay.
You got the barking dog.
That was me. It's dogs plural. They're outside. Shut the door.
And we need. We need at least one more member here, so I hope somebody's going to show.
I can give John and Bill a call if you think I should.
Yeah, why don't you do something with at least try to get one of them because as I said, this will not, not end well here. Need one more. Just if anyone who is, can hear me, please, we're waiting for one more member of the board. We've, we need five people to persuade, proceed. We only have four at the moment. Okay, we have two possibilities. We're hoping one will. Okay, here comes Mr. Bernard. There he is. All right. I hope we can just get him unmuted. There you go. Hey, John?
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. We've been waiting with great anticipation for you to show, you know, but okay. I guess we won't wait for Mr. Rosen because it is 7:03. So why don't, why don't we start just what I'll do is, you know, let me just go over the, start the thing off here. My name is Richard Jurzak. Okay, this is a meeting in the South Kingston, Rhode Island zoning board review. Okay, in a minute, what we're going to do is have Jessica Spence, okay? The South Kingston Administrative Support Associate for the Building Department. Explain how you'll be able to get on and offer your opinion on things. But before we get there, let's start the meeting. Okay, members present are Robert Cagnetta, John Bernardo, Richard Jurzak, Tom Daniels, and William Mark. Okay. I don't see we're missing William Rosen. Mr. Rosen, you're not there, right? Okay, I guess he's not. All right. Also present are Wayne Pimental, the South Kingston zoning official. Okay. Jessica Spence, the South Kingston Administrative Support Associate. And Amy Goins, the South Kingston Assistant Town Solicitor. Okay. The way this thing works is that there are five regular and two alternate members of the board. Okay. Five members vote on petitions. An alternate member will only vote if one of the regular members either is not there or recuses himself. Okay. Today, all of the regular members are here, so we should have no, no issue with deciding who vote. All, every, every one of the regular members here will vote today. All right. All right, you're either here for a variance or a special use permit. Okay. This board is a quasi judicial body created by South Kingston ordinance pursuant to state law. We don't follow the strict rules of evidence, so we operate in what we believe to be a fair and equitable manner. We like to make sure everyone speaks their piece. But please make sure that when you do speak, you keep it as relevant as possible. Okay. And be nice. Okay. All right, when your petition is called, okay. What you will do is you will give an explanation of what you'd be looking for. Okay, I will ask you to take an oath to tell the truth. You'll then present your petition. You also may have other witnesses testifying in support of your petition. The board members will then ask questions of you and/or your witnesses. Once you are done, okay, anyone else wishing to present testimony in support or opposition to the petition or ask questions, okay, will identify themselves, be sworn in, and present their testimony. Board members may again ask questions. Once all have spoken, petitioner will be allowed to answer questions raised by the audience and/or respond to audience comments. After hearing all testimony before a vote, a vote is taken, board members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. With regard to variances and special use permits, four of the five members voting must vote for your petition to be granted. Okay, Jessica, would you give us a little, tell us a little bit on what, how this whole Zoom thing works for participants?
Sure. So hello, welcome everyone who hasn't been here before. So tonight, if you are a applicant, you are on as a panelist and your video is going to be muted and your, um, I'm sorry, your video is going to be stopped and your microphone is going to be muted until you're actually called to speak. At that point, we will make you active. Um, everything is available to view online, all of the petitions, everything at South Kingston Building and Zoning under current zoning applications. Um, there is a question and answer function that is only going to be used if, um, you're, you're having a technical difficulty. We're not going to be asking, answering any type of questions related to any zoning applications during that question and answer section. So what will happen is, once the applicant has given all testimony, we will ask if there's anyone in the audience, an attendee who wishes to speak. And what they will need to do is raise their hand at that point. To raise your hand, um, on your computer, there's a little icon that says raise hand. If you're calling in by phone, you're going to hit star nine to raise hand and then star six will mute and unmute you. That's basically how it's going to work. Again, it's going to be just like a regular in-person zoning meeting that you'll be called upon. If you have, you know, when it turns to the open section of the meeting and anyone needs to speak, that's when you will raise your hand. Um, that's all I have to say.
Okay, all right. All right, before we move on and go to the, the first petitions, I just, and I apologize to the lawyers here. I apologize to the board members here. But for those people who are not lawyers or board members and are not familiar with what we do here, okay, please understand that the reason we're going to ask a lot of questions of you, okay, is that in order for us to grant what you are asking for, we have to find certain things. We just can't do whatever we want to do pursuant to the ordinance and pursuant to state law. If we want to grant the variance or a special use permit, we literally have to, there's a cookbook approach and fill in the blanks. All right. With regard to variances, and please understand that, that pretty much all the variances we have are things called dimensional variances. You are, you are not asking to use your property for something that it's, it's not approved for, but you're asking to, to waive some type of regulation such as height setback, something like that. If you're asking for a variance, okay, you have to show the following. Number one, that you have a hardship, which is due to the unique characteristic of the subject land destruction. Okay. Number two, that the hardship does not result any prior action on your part. Number three, the, the granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Number four, that the relief requested is at least necessary. And number five, since these are pretty much all dimensional variances, you must also show that the hardship that will be suffered if the variance is not granted shall amount to more than a mere convenience. Now, the rare reason I explain this is again, we're going to ask you questions. We're not trying to pick on you. We're not trying to catch you. We're trying to make sure that if we are going to grant it, that we can, we can find all of these requirements. Now, with regard to special use permits, it's a little simpler. If we were to, to grant a special use permit, we have to show that the special use permit requested is specifically authorized by the zoning ordinance. That's number one. Number two, that the special use requested meets all the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance. And number three, that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the South Kingston zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan. Okay. Anything else just before I start?
I don't think so.
Okay, let's get, let's get the, the quick matters over with. We're going to continue the petition of David Levesque.
Rick, I'm sorry. Were you going to have Amy go?
Oh, yeah. Where's Amy? Where'd she go? There you go. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Um, this is Amy Goins, Special Legal Counsel. Um, the board members have been asking about when do we think in-person meetings might resume, and I still don't have an answer to that, but I do want to let you know, um, the executive order that's currently in place allowing remote meetings provides that even if in-person meetings resume, we must still continue to, to provide an adequate alternative means of public access, which is what we're doing via Zoom. So I just want to make everyone aware, um, that even if a few months down the line, we can, we can get together in person again, we are still going to need to utilize the Zoom platform or something like it so that people who don't want to come in person or can't come in person can call in. Um, you know, at some point, all of these executive orders will be superseded by legislation, but the word that I have heard is, there are many in, in public life who like the remote meeting option. And I, I think if it is going to be permitted for, um, you know, members of town councils, planning zoning boards, other public bodies, we will have to get comfortable with a call-in option like this for members of the public. So that's the only thing I wanted to say, just, um, you know, we're, we're continuing as we have been meeting remotely. I think personally, it's been working out pretty well, thanks to the hard work of staff. Um, you know, getting the applications online so that everyone can review them. The screen sharing is very helpful. Um, but I just want to let you all know that we've, we've gotten used to Zoom and we're going to, it's, it's here to stay for the foreseeable future. So that's it.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Amy?
Amy, are you outside?
This is a virtual background of, of the law office. So no, I'm, I'm inside of my basement.
I was just worried about the weather.
Okay, just for the record, Bill Rosen has also joined us, so we have our, our sixth member here today. All right. All right, let's start. All right. Continuation of the petition, David Levesque, 1395 Atwood Avenue, Johnston, Rhode Island. Special use permit on the zoning ordinance. Amy, uh, we're going to have this go over. Do I have to read this whole thing?
You don't. Yeah, I would just mention that the property address and the applicant stamps. Oh, the, the letter. No, you don't need to read the letter verbatim.
Okay, then, then what? No, I don't mean the letter, but I mean the whole, the announcement and whatever. The owner of the property is Gerald Richmond for premises located at 151 Old Tower Hill Road. Let me see. Does it say map 57-2 lot 51 in zone CH commercial highway? Okay, and I understand that Attorney Callahan is here today. Is he?
Hello, hello, Mr. Chairman. How are you? Thanks for having us tonight.
Okay, yes, go, go ahead, Attorney Callan.
I know you have a busy calendar tonight, so based on that and some other factors, requesting a continuation to the July 15th, 2020 zoning board meeting, please.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Anyone, I guess I don't have to ask for comments on that. Would, would someone like to make a motion to do that, please?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to continue the matter till the next meeting in July 17.
15, July 15.
Excuse me.
Okay.
July 15.
July 15. Okay, motion made by Mr. Cagnetta. Would someone second it?
Second, Mark.
Okay, second by Mr. Mark. Okay, any discussion? All right, let's just, uh, all in favor of moving that motion?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, the eyes have it. Okay, that's moved to July 15.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, the next one, continuation of the petition of Charles Walsh. Okay. Three Stone Post Way, Greenville, Rhode Island. Okay. And this regards, this is, uh, owner of the property is Louise Marie Walsh Living Trust for premises on Rosebrier Avenue. Assessors map 92-4, lot 215 and zoned R30. Okay. And this petition, we're looking to, to continue this one until June 24th. Now again, do we have a letter or something on that? Jess, what do we have? Is there someone here for that petition?
Uh, Attorney Kenyon is here for that.
Oh, yes. Okay, Mr. Kenyon, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant Charles Walsh. And we are requesting that the matter be continued to your June 24th meeting.
Okay. All right, would someone make a motion to continue, to have that moved to the June 24th meeting?
I'll move the continuation of petition of Charles Walsh. Details were read into the record by the chairman. Move the petition to be continued and heard on June 24th, 2020.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Daniel. So someone second it?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Cagnetta. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the eyes have it unanimously. That's moved to June 24th, 2020. Okay. All right. The next one, now, Mr. Kenyon, I think these are both yours, aren't they? The, the petition of John Drew. Both of them. Are these both the same or they're, I guess they're a little different. All right, you know what?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Maybe we should do the, um, continuation request for Mr. Cunningham first. That's also Attorney Kenyon.
Okay. All right, we can do that.
Here.
Okay, why don't we do that if anyone is here? All right. We're going to go down to the petition of Daniel J. Cunningham, 3986. What is that? BI, BI Tower Hill Road? Tower Hill Road. What's the BI?
B.
B?
B. Our hill.
Oh, just B. It's just B?
B.
Okay, B Tower Hill Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. For special use permit on the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new 1600 square foot dwelling with a detached 24 by 24 garage. This property is located with the Jerry Brown Farm Association property. The parcel of land that this property is located on is non-conforming. Due to the number of residential structures on the same parcel, a special use permit is required for any additional enlargement, expansion, or intensification of non-conforming land, lot size of 70 acres, although there are no property lines between dwellings. The distance from the proposed dwelling to the closest adjacent dwelling is 83 feet. A special use permit is required per zoning ordinance section 203, special use permit for additional enlargement, expansion, or dense or intensification, and 907 stands as a relief. Owner of land is Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc. And the owner of the dwelling is Daniel J. Cunningham for premises located at 35 Fire Lane 2, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Assessors map 82-1, lot 1-1 and zoned R80. Okay, Mr. Kenyon, I understand this is yours. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant. The last couple of days, there were a couple of issues raised on this application. And so we're requesting some additional time in order to address them. If possible, we were hoping for the June 24th meeting. If not, then your July regular meeting.
Okay. All right, I have, Jessica has explained to me that the next meeting that we have on the special meeting, we only have one matter on anyway. So I don't really have a problem with this being heard next week either. Okay. Does, I mean, does any, any board members have any issue with having it heard next week? Okay, well, I don't, if that's the case, if someone would make a motion to have this go over to the next meeting to, to our, not our July meeting, but our, our meeting on the 24, our special meeting on the 24. Okay, go ahead, somebody.
All right. I move the continuation of the petition of Daniel J. Cunningham. Details read into the record by the chairman. To the June 24th meeting of the zoning board with a, should put in that the possibility that will go to the 15th, based, uh, July 15th based on the, based on the comments from the attorney for the petitioner. But otherwise, move it to the June 24th date.
Okay, all right, motion made by Mr. Daniels. Someone second it?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Mr. Cagnetta. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, the eyes have it. It's moved to the June 24th. Okay. All right, anyone in the audience who's listening, please understand that this will be heard next week at our, our, our special meeting. All right, the next one, okay. I guess I'm just going to go, I'm going to have to go through each one of us as these go. Petition of John C. Drew and Conrad Hefferman. CEO Kenyon Law Offices, LLP, 133 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for special use permit extension under the zoning ordinance as follows. Request for a third one-year extension of expiration date for a special use permit granted on November 16, 2016 and recorded on December 14, 2016 for property owned by John C. Drew and Conrad Hefferman. 130 Rosebrier Avenue, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for a special use permit to install an onsite wastewater treatment system, OWTS, closer to wetlands than permitted in an R80 zone, 150 feet required, 75.4 feet requested. Premises located at Green Hill Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Assessors map 90-4 lot 174, section 504 and 907. Request made pursuant to section 910B of the zoning ordinance. Applicant requests an extension. Request an extension of the expiration date from July 1, 2020 to July 1, 2021. Amy, can I go and do the both of these at once? Can I read the next one and have him comment on both at once?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all right, I'm going to do that. All right. The next one, petition of John C. Drew and Conrad C. Hefferman. Okay, CEO Kenyon Law Associates, LLP, 133 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for dimensional variance extension under zoning ordinance as follows. Request for a third one-year extension of expiration date for the dimensional variance granted on March 16, 2016 and recorded on March 23, 2016 for property owned by John C. Drew and Conrad C. Hefferman. 130 Rosebrier Avenue, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for dimensional variance to construct a 24 by 24 dwelling closer to the front line than permitted in an R80 zone, 40 feet required, 35.7 feet requested. Premises located at Green Hill Beach Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Assessors map 90-4, lot 174, section 207 and 907. Request made pursuant to section 910B of the zoning ordinance. Applicant requests an extension of the expiration date from July 1, 2020 to July 1, 2021. Okay, go ahead, John.
Thank you. Once again, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicants Conrad Heffernan and John Drew. The applicants obtained relief for property located on Green Hill Beach Road designated as tax assesses plat 96-1 lot 174. The zoning relief included a special use permit to install an OWTS within 150 feet of a wetland and a front yard setback of variance of 4.3 feet to allow the construction of a 24-foot by 24-foot single-family residence. The applicant has received two one-year extensions of the approval and is here tonight requesting a third extension of both approvals. However, uh, we discovered after last month's meeting on the neighboring property that this should actually be the second one-year extension, I believe. The zoning ordinance allows for a two-year expiration period for conditional approvals that also require state or federal permits. In this case, the applicants were required to obtain CRMC assent, which means we didn't, we probably didn't have to do the first extension. The applicants have received the CRMC assent. They've expended over $30,000 in engineering and legal costs to obtain the necessary approvals. They've been marketing the property. And it's been difficult due to the, the conditions that are on the approvals from DEM and CRMC. Since obtaining these approvals approximately a year and a half ago, Mr. Heffernan passed away. His wife, Joanne Heffernan, became co-owner of the property. She has dementia and is in a nursing home right now. So their nephew Sterling Smith has taken over, attempting to complete this project. He's here by phone, but he doesn't have access to a computer, so he's not able to Zoom. But if you have any questions, he can answer them, but we're requesting a one-year extension at this time.
Okay, and they, John, they are actively pursuing this and they've spent a good amount of money on it and they're, uh, they, so, so they're moving it along. It's just all the circumstances. Is that the case?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Board members, questions for, for John? Anybody?
I don't have any. None.
Okay, all right. Okay, and all right, if that's the case, would someone like to make a motion on both of these requests to, uh, to have this, the expiration dates extended? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, oh, this is Mark. Yeah, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to grant the extension for both the special use permit and the dimensional variance to July of 2021 for the petition of John C. Drew and Conrad Heffernan. Details is read by the chairman.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mark. Would someone like to second that?
I'll sec, I'll second.
Okay, second by Mr. Cagnetta. Discussion. Oh, you know what? I, do I, Amy, I did not ask if there was. Oh, you know what, I, do I, Amy, I did not ask if there was any, uh, I should have asked if there are any audience comments, I'm sorry. Before we have a vote, I would like to, uh, I'd like to ask the audience, okay? Is there anyone who would like to either offer any evidence, either in, in up, support or opposition to these requests for extensions? Anyone, Jess?
There's no one.
Okay, all right, Mr. Mark, would you just renew your, your, I, I don't think you have to say it all over again, just renew your, uh, your motion and say it's.
My motion to grant the extension for both the special use and the dimensional variance for the applicant to July of two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay.
This, this is Amy. Bill, can you just reference in your motion, it's made under section nine oh eight B and that the board finds there is good cause for the extension?
And the extension is made under nine oh eight B or nine-ten B, and that that covers for the extension.
Okay. All right, would you, would you consider adding, and there's good cause for the extension?
And there's good cause for the extension, given the circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a motion made by Mr. Mark, would someone second it?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cagnetta, any discussion? Okay, no discussion, let's have a vote. We're gonna do this by, by roll call. Okay, Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak, aye, okay, the motion carries and those extensions are granted.
Right, thank you, have a good night.
Okay, all right, the, the next one, okay? Petition of Donna Martone, one-two-six Pershing Avenue, Locust Valley, New York, for dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct two additions onto the existing single-family dwelling. The lot is legally non-conforming, which allows for reduced setbacks. The two-story addition on the front requires side yard relief only. The ordinance allows the front of the house to align with the abutting structures by right. The required side yard setback is ten feet. The addition along the right side will be seven-point-seven-five feet from the property line. Relief of two-point-two-five feet is request, required, okay? The rear yard setback is thirty feet. The addition in the rear of the dwelling will be sixteen feet from the rear property line. Relief of fourteen feet is required. The same side yard relief of two-point-two-five feet is needed for the rear addition also. The maximum lot coverage of twenty-five percent will also be exceeded. It currently is at twenty-seven-point-six percent and will increase to thirty-six-point-eight percent. Overall relief would be eleven-point-eight percent or an additional four-hundred-fifty-nine-point-five square feet overall is requested. Lot size is point oh nine acres. The dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section four oh one, Schedule of Dimensional Regulations Table in section nine oh seven, Standards of Relief. Owner of the property is Donna M Martone for premises located at Eight Pine Court, assessors map forty-three dash four, lot forty-one, and is zoned R twenty. Is someone here in support for this petition? Someone here who wants to speak, please?
Yes, hello, I am the engineer for the applicant. My name is Terry Gentis.
Okay, will you spell your name, please?
Sure, T E R R I G E N T E S.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, as you mentioned, it's an existing dwelling that Donna Martone has owned for about nine years. She and her husband are getting ready for retirement, and so they wanted to plan this addition to make the house ready for year-round use as, as well as looking forward in the future to make things accessible. So that's kind of what guided the project. Some of the things we did is right now, the washing machine and dryer are located in the basement. So by providing this addition, we're able to move that upstairs as well as to provide a first-floor bathroom. Right, so the bathroom will be in the twelve-by-ten addition, and in the rear, we're also proposing a twelve-by-twenty addition, and, and that will serve, right now, the kitchen is, is very small. And it's at two different levels, so what we're gonna do is, is reconstruct the part of the kitchen and provide a dining room so that, that it's room for, for seating. And then, uh, we're gonna, as part of this project, we'll be modifying the roof line. Right now, it's a very shallow pitch, and there's some water issues that are occurring in the rear of the, the structure. So what we're going to do is put dormers in the front as well and raise the roof. See it there? Right, so with essentially keeping the same Cape Cod feel and look, just providing increased headroom on the second level and increasing the pitch so that we can provide for, uh, you know, positive drainage and eliminate some of the ice damming that's been occurring. As you mentioned, it's an existing three-bedroom dwelling. It is a substandard lot. It currently does not meet the setbacks to the side or the rear. And as, as far as coverage goes, we are increasing the building coverage, but what we're planning on doing is removing some of the patios and walkways, and the net impervious area will not increase between existing and proposed. It's served by sewer and water, public sewer and water, and that's, that's about it. It's, um, in keeping with the neighborhood. It's a lot of small lots, there are a lot of lots have undergone changes in the last few years, and I think this will provide a good project that will, you know, really give the homeowners a chance to, yes, there, you can see there. So we're gonna add the master bath and, and it'll be accessible for years to come and also providing the dining area, which they do not now have. And also, there's, there's some conflicts at the front door. When you open the door, it's, it's very difficult to get up the stairs, and so we're just going to enclose the portion of the front entry, which is there now, and, and that will provide room to hang up your coat and also remove that conflict point.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Is parking on the, on the property for three vehicles, and I think right in front, another is a gravel area for another fourth vehicle. I think that, that covers it, if you have any questions.
Okay, board members, questions for this witness?
I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Engineer Terry, this is John Bernardo.
Hello.
So is it fair to say that the proposed two-floor addition essentially on the north side of the property, and of course, notwithstanding the rear addition, that would square off the footprint of the property?
Correct.
Okay. So visually, that's, that's a, that's a good thing, I would say, because you think there was second doorway over there as well that you're gonna end up covering up by putting that addition there?
Right, yes, there's a doorway now, and it goes into what was once a porch, and it, you know, was brought into the house. But like I said, it's at two different levels right there, and so you're in the kitchen and you can trip down into the, into the area where there's a table, but it really isn't sufficient size to use, so this will provide that. And, and it will remove the walkway, where the master bath is, will, is currently a walkway.
So, um, I'm gonna call you Terry. Sorry, I'm getting informal, but Terry, what's on the first floor of that two-story addition on the north side of the property? What are you gonna be putting there?
I'm sorry, on the the entry, are you referring to the entry?
I'm referring to the, of that second floor addition on the north side of the property.
Oh, oh, the second floor, and the next floor plan would show. So, so currently, there's two bedrooms upstairs with a knee wall, and basically, we're just gonna reconfigure that space. It'll provide some additional headroom, and a third bedroom can be achieved.
Well, what's on the first floor, on the ground floor? What's gonna be there? Is the dining room there or?
Yes, yes, that will be a dining room.
Okay, and the house, as in otherwise, have a dining room?
I'm sorry, what?
The house, otherwise, does not have a dining room?
Correct, correct, and, and Donna has nine grandkids, so she's looking forward in her retirement to dining with her grandkids once in a while.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
You're good? Anyone else, other board members, questions?
This is Amy. I would just like the board members to get in the habit of asking about whether there are state or federal approvals required, and that way we can note on the approval, if it's granted, whether the expiration period will be the standard one year or two years, as is specified in the zoning ordinance for conditional zoning approvals. So this one, will it require an OWTS approval for the additional bedroom?
No, no, it's, uh, sewer service is provided, municipal sewer service, and we're over two hundred feet outside of coastal resource jurisdiction.
Okay.
Onside over the two hundred feet.
So this one will not be considered a conditional approval, then? Great, okay.
Okay, any other questions, board members? No? Okay, well, uh, uh, thank you. Okay, now, is there anyone in the audience? Oh, do you, do you have anything else you want to tell us?
Um.
Go.
I might.
We'll give you, we'll give you a chance to talk again if someone asks some other questions. All right, all right, does anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Okay, Jessica, will you tell them again how to do it?
Sure, if you are calling in by phone, you're gonna hit star nine to raise your hand, and then star six will mute and unmute you. If you're on your computer, you'll see a little icon that says raise hand.
Okay, Jess, could you get rid of this floor plan so I can see the people again?
There you go.
There you go, thank you. I don't know, I feel more comfortable. I, I feel like there's somebody here that I'm talking to. Okay, is anyone, Jess, anybody?
No one.
Speak? No one? Okay, no one is responding, okay, if that's the case, uh, board members, anyone have an issue with this?
No.
No.
Okay, if that's the case, will someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Bernardo?
Mr. Bernardo makes a motion to approve the petition of Donna Martone, one-twenty-six Pershing, Pershing Avenue, Locust Valley, New York, for dimensional variance under our zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking to construct two additions onto the existing single-family dwelling. The lot is legally non-conforming, which allows for reduced setbacks. The two-story addition on the front requires side yard relief only. The ordinance allows the front of the house to align with the budding structures by right. It requires set yard, excuse me, the required side yard setback is ten feet. The addition along the right side will be seven-point-seven-five feet from the property line, so they're looking for relief of two-point-two-five feet. Rear yard setback is thirty feet. The addition in the rear dwelling will be sixteen feet from the rear property line, so they're looking for fourteen feet of relief. And, uh, the same side yard relief of two-point-two is need for the rear addition also. The maximum lot coverage is twenty-five percent, and it's gonna be exceeded if this is granted, and currently, it's at twenty-seven-point-six, which will increase to thirty-six-point-eight. Overall relief therefore is eleven-point-eight feet, which translates into four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-point-five square feet of requested relief. Lot size is point oh nine acres, and again, this is a dimension of variance under section nine oh seven. Donna Martone is the owner at Eight Pine Court, assesses map forty-three dash four, lot forty-one, and when that, we're in a R twenty zone. The petitioner was represented today by Terry Gent, G E N T E S, he's the engineer. She's the only one who spoke. There's some fine drawings that were submitted in support of the application, including a site plan and also elevations of the property, uh, which would be incorporated into the decision-making, the final decision. Uh, we understand there are no conditional approvals because this property does not need OWTS. It's actually hooked up to the town sewer, and it's beyond two hundred feet from the narrow river, so we're not worried about CRMC or DM getting involved. The engineer testified that her clients, the owner of the property, our husband and wife, they're at retirement. They wanna use this house for year-round and to make it compatible, compatible for their living in light of their new situation in life. They wanna make it more convenient inside the home. There were some examples presented where washer and dryer, which is in the basement, will now be moved up to, uh, upstairs. There's no dining room. This addition or these two additions will create a new dining room and also accommodate a more functional kitchen as well as providing easier access to the front door. And the engineer also mentioned that there'll be, um, an adjustment to the roof line to address some of the water issues that the property had been experiencing. With that said, I would, uh, I would find that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and it's not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant. Because they're simply trying to address some of the, the, the issues that are lacking in this property and bring it up to an accommodating resource for the people who are gonna be occupying it now on a year, yearly level, excuse me, a yearly time period, and given their new station in life as retirees. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater, greater financial gain, because again, they're simply making the property into a more usable and viable living resource for them. Board finds that the requested variance will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area or appear to be intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan. This owner board member has been out to the property and is also familiar with that area and sees nothing in the proposed petition that would make it incongruous to the other properties in the area. The board finds that the relief requested is the least relief necessary based on the facts that I just put forth. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, would amount to more than mere inconvenience. I would add that the this member at least has taken into consideration that the addition to the north of the property squares off the property, removes, uh, what appears to be two entryways from the front of the property and creates a more, uh, natural look to the property. And that in squaring it off, at least this board member is not concerned about the fact that that increases the lot coverage because it does square off the property. The only real new lot coverage, it would appear would be the addition to the back. And I've already stated the reasons why they needed that in order to create the space and new resources for the property owners. So with that said, and of course tying the petition into the documents that were submitted, I move that we grant the petition.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Bernardo. Would someone like to second it?
I'll second, Mr. Mark.
Second by Mr. Mark. Okay, discussion. Hey, everyone okay with this? No discussion? Okay, all right. Yeah, you, everyone's okay? All right, let's have a vote, okay? Mr. Bernardo.
Hi.
Mr. Mark.
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta.
Hi.
Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Mr. Jurzak, hi, okay. Motion passes, okay. Good luck. Thank you for your time, miss.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, please, for anyone in the audience, the next petition of Cunningham has gone over until next Wednesday at seven o'clock. At 7:24 it will be heard, okay? All right, the next one. Okay, petition of Brendan and Natalie Fish, 100 Oakwoods Drive, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant has installed a detached barn. The barn was purchased as a kit and after an inspection, it was determined that the roof height exceeded the maximum of 15 feet allowed. The owner stated that there was an error in the roof pitch specifications originally provided by the company and then he wasn't aware of it. The height of the roof is 16.5 feet. Relief of 1.5 feet is requested. Lot size is .69 acres. A dimensional variance is required for zoning ordinance section 401, schedule of dimensional regulations table and section 907 standards of relief. The owner of the property is Brendan and Natalie Fish for premises located at 100 Oakwoods Drive, assessors map 49 dash one, lots 77 and zoned R20. Is someone here for this petition?
Yes, that'd be me, Brandon Fish.
Okay, would you spell your name, sir?
Sure, B R A N D O N.
Okay. Your last name, too. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm.
For the record. Yeah, we didn't hear you.
F I S H.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead. Tell us what you want from us.
Okay, so, um, so I'm building a barn, 34 by 22. I had a company out of North Carolina install the barn for me. I'm a, I'm a local excavating contractor, so I'm pretty aware of restrictions and heights and everything. So when I, when I did my elevations, I took the average of the four corners and which left myself with a one-foot height foundation. And with the plan that was supposed to, that I bought, was only a 14-foot height overall. I think you guys all have, you have the plan that I sent in. So, um, so, yeah, so that was it. I'm doing it myself, so I never measured it until, you know, it was obviously a little bit too late. But yeah, it's, I'm a foot and a half too tall. Trying to think, I mean, that's about it, you know? That's, that's why I'm here, it's just a.
Okay, all right, so there's no, you didn't do this purposely, it was, it was an error, it's up at this point? Okay, and it's a foot and a half too tall. Is that what it is?
Yes.
That sums it up. Okay, do you have anything, you're not going to put any other witnesses on or anything like that, it's just you?
It's just me, yes.
Okay, fine. All right, board members, questions for this gentleman?
Question to the applicant, how did you become aware it was a foot and a half over?
Uh, well, I was, I was, I was shooting grades and I had my transit rod. That, I'm, I'm an excavator and when I was, I was measuring, because I'm doing, I'm sheathing it myself and, you know, I want to finish myself as a project hobby shop. And when I put the transit rod up, I noticed that I was, I was, I was over the height. And that was, you know, that was it, you know?
So you brought it to the attention of the building official on your own?
No, I did not. It was, no, I did not.
Well, I mean, how did it get here, I guess is what my question is.
Somebody must have, I'm not sure. I was, oh, oh, no, they were, oh, I'm sorry. They were coming to do an inspection for the building and they asked, they were going to come do a height inspection and that's when I took the height, the height. That's how, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That's fine, okay. Anyone else? Questions for this gentleman?
Mr. Chairman, this is Rob Cagnetta. Mr. Fish, are you going to use this for any purposes outside of just homeowner residential use?
No, this is just for my hobby shop. I try to, I try to, I have a couple of old cars that I, I I tinker with, so it's mainly just a little, little hobby shop and stuff from my lawnmower. My wife can have her garage back.
But not for any excavation equipment or not for your business to be run on?
None whatsoever, none, zero commercial use.
Thank you.
Okay, you can't even see this building from the front, right?
No.
Back.
The house, yeah, it's about 200 feet from the Oakwoods Drive, from the, you know, from the front of our house. It's a, we have a walkout, so this, the top of the roof of the barn right now is probably 20 feet shorter than the roof pitch of my, of my house, you know, so I, you know, I could yeah, so it's, 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 you can't see it, no.
Okay, and it would, and it clearly would be a major problem to try to knock off a foot and a half. So it would cause you much effort and extreme expense. Okay. All right, any other board members, questions for this gentleman? Sir, do you have anything else you want to tell us, or is that it?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, all right, is there anyone in the audience wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Anyone, Jessica?
No one's raised their hand.
Okay, again, tell them how to raise their hand.
So if you're calling by phone, it is star nine to raise your hand. Star six will mute and unmute. And then if you're on the computer, there's a little icon that says raise hand.
Okay, again, anyone want to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Now that you know how? No one? Okay. All right, board members, anyone have an issue with this?
I don't, I just have a question from this going.
Go ahead.
Do we, we're considering this as if it doesn't exist and this is a petition for a dimensional variance to build something that a foot and a half over?
That's, that's really how you should, this is Amy, special legal counsel, you should always consider the after the fact ones as if it didn't exist, otherwise they would incentivize, not, obviously, this was an honest mistake in this case, not suggesting otherwise, but it would incentivize people to build first and ask permission later because there's your hardship. But so in this case, just consider it as if the structure doesn't exist already.
Okay, so we shouldn't use the justification or rationalization that it was no ill will or ill intent?
I would say you can mention that in your discussion, but the legal finding should not be based on, should not be based on that because otherwise also a person would be barred from ever requesting relief afterwards because the hardship would be self-created. So the hardship in this case should be, you know, tied to or identified as particular to the building. And if it's from a, from a kit, is that correct? It was, so the, the design of the building as it was purchased from the kit.
Okay, anyone else? Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Someone has raised their hand to speak, Terry Gentis.
Okay, who was that? What was the name?
Terry Gentis, the engineer who was just on.
Oh, okay, all right, go ahead, Terry.
Actually, hi, actually, I'm Jeff Campopiano, I'm a professional engineer, I work with Terry Gentis.
Okay, hang on one second. Whoa, 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 give us your, spell your name so we, for the record, please.
Correct, it's not as easy as fish. Campopiano, Jeffrey, J E F F R E Y, C A M P O P I A N O.
Okay, do you swear to tell truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I know Brandon Fish, he's a, like you said, he's a local excavator. And I know about this problem and, you know, he's such a good guy, he didn't even throw that company under the bus. But basically, they built the wrong kit. It was supposed to have like, you know, a six pitch roof and be 14 feet tall, and they built one that was taller. So it was kind of a surprise to him and I just wanted to throw that in.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Okay.
All right, anyone else want to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
There's no one else.
No one else? Okay, all right, board members, I think I already asked if anyone has a problem. Would someone like to make a motion here?
I'll take it.
Mr. Cagnetta.
Uh, this is Mr. Cagnetta, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of Brandon and Natalie Fish, as read in by the chair. The request is for a dimensional variance per the zoning ordinance section 401 and section 907. Mr. Fish presented his plan to have a pre-manufactured garage made for his property on Oakwoods Drive. Oakwoods Drive is a very secluded planned neighborhood in South Kingstown. It has relatively longer depth lots. In this case, it is close to 300 feet, about 275 feet. And the proposed garage is going in the western backside of the property. The garage is, as I said, from a kit. And the roof height is going to be 16.5 feet as opposed to the maximum 15 feet allowed. So he's going to be 1.5 feet over the height. And this, as proposed, as I said, is farther away from the street side and won't have a consequence to the neighbors. There was one person, Mr. Campiano, who spoke in favor of Mr. Fish and the property and that it would not sort of obstruct the neighborhood. There were no individuals in opposition. And to the record, the applicant had submitted the plans, the elevation, stating 14 feet on this plan, but the actual height is 16 feet, 16.5 feet requested. And that we find, the board finds the hardship which the applicant is seeking relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land. As I said, it is dropping down and far away from the main street. And it will, it's not due to the physical, any physical or economical disability of the applicant. We find that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. And does not result primarily of the applicant's desire to realize a greater financial gain. And that is because the height isn't going to allow them to utilize the building differently. We find that this will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. As I said, it sits far and away from the main street. It won't impair the intent or purpose of our zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan. This is the least relief necessary based on the plans provided. The 16.5 feet was the least. And we find that the hardship suffered by the owner, if this were not granted, would be more than a mere inconvenience because they wouldn't be able to purchase their pre-fab unit. So no conditions. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Cagnetta. Would someone like to second it?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Daniels. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, let's have a vote, okay? Mr. Cagnetta.
Hi.
Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Mr. Bernardo.
Hi.
Mr. Mark.
Hi.
Mr. Jurzak, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a great night.
Okay. All right, the next one. Petition of DiStefano Brothers, 433 Main Street, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, for dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct the detached accessory structure. The living area of the accessory apartment structure will be 750 square feet, the maximum allowed. The applicant is also proposing to construct a covered entry and rear covered deck consisting of 162 square feet and 214 square feet respectively. Covered porch areas are to be included as part of the maximum of 750 square feet allowed for accessory structure. The two covered porches consist of 376 square feet. This exceeds the amount allowed. Relief of 376 square feet over the maximum is requested. Lot size is 4.28 acres. A dimensional variance is required for zoning ordinance section 503.2 accessory structures and section 907 standards of relief. The owner of the property is Ian and Lindsay Madam for premises located at 26 East Hillway, assessors map 55, lot 18, and is zoned R8. Okay, someone here for this petition?
Yes, Peter DiStefano.
Okay, will you spell your name, Peter, please?
Yep, D I S T E F A N O.
Okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and your first name is full, it's Peter, not just Pete, right?
P T R.
Okay, okay, go ahead, sir.
Yep, so my clients Ian and Lindsay are looking to build an accessory structure for their parents so that they can spend more time in Rhode Island with the family. They're looking, you know, as they're getting older, they're looking for a place that they can have and spend some more time visiting the family. The 750 square feet for them to live here for a few months is very tight space. The hope was to extend some living space in the back. They are getting older, so instead of doing a patio or something lower, this would allow us to all stay at a similar one-level height. And the front entry is really just for covered protection as they come into the building.
Okay, what are you, what are you doing for sewage and what do you, septic?
It'll be, yep, individual septic plan, you know, for this structure itself, yep, separate from the home.
Is it a one-bedroom system?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, all right. Okay, what, what's the office? What's that mean?
It's where he's going to do his work, reading. I think it's a place to get away from his wife, but.
Okay, so, so it's a man cave or den? Okay, an office, huh? All right, that's fine. Okay, anything else you want to tell us?
Not really. You know, I mean, because of the shape and the design, you know, we, we have these little outcoves that we think will be very useful to what, you know, the roof covering there, so, I mean, that's really the thought.
Okay, all right, board members, questions for this gentleman?
Question is the, this is Tom Daniels. The question I have is, isn't this area serviced by a sewer or no?
It is not.
It is not, okay. How about water?
Uh, no, we have to weld to.
How do you propose to get water to?
We have two options, we're either going to attach to the existing well and run it off, you know, use a feed from the house and bring it over or put a new well in if we have to.
Okay.
Where is the septic system for the existing house now, in the back?
It is, if you're standing in front of the house, to the left of the house.
Okay, to the left of the house, all right, not in front of, and this, and this is kind of in front of the house. Yeah, when you go around that big, you go, you go straight, right, when you come in there instead of going right and it's got on the right, yeah. All right. It's a big house. How big is the main house?
You know, off the top of my head, I think it's like 4,500 square feet of living space. They have four kids. You know, a lot going on.
Okay, all right. Okay, board members, questions for this gentleman?
Additional question, Tom Daniels, do you have any preliminary on the ISDS yet?
We were waiting to hear, you know, we're going to kind of go through this, we have an. Uh, we were waiting here, you know, we're gonna kind of go through this. We have an engineer working on some soil samples. Um, we're working on that right now, but we wanted to really understand this portion of it, if we could get this or not. Okay.
So I think, so this is Amy Goins, and how are you, Peter? Nice to see you. I think this is one where approval would be conditioned on um, DEM and possibly DOH approval for the well. So this one will be a two-year expiration under section nine oh eight.
Okay, all right. Uh, any other, anyone else have questions, gentlemen? All right, does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Are you, Mr. Di Stefano, you have no other witnesses or anyone?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to bring up that the homeowners, we've talked to all the neighbors, uh, we, the homeowner had talked to all the neighbors and I talked to the land trust who has two pieces of property and the land trust was in favor of it. Julia talked to her.
Okay, good. All right, anyone else in, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Anyone, Jessica?
No one.
No one raised their hand? Okay, fine, all right. Uh, board members, does anyone have an issue with this? Nope. Anybody?
Yeah, John Bernardo has a question.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
So it's fifty feet from the road. Um, I can't read the name of the road, but it's building, the proposed structure is fifty feet. Did somebody draw that in there on this, on this uh, plan?
They did, yes. So it was clear.
Do we have setbacks we need to worry about? Um, um, either counsel or Wayne that, I mean, it seems like it would be well beyond any setback issues anyway. But.
Uh, John, this is Wayne from the goal. Uh, fifty foot setback is the minimum front yard setback and because they front on East Hill and Bittersweet, that fifty foot comes into play. So that was noted on the plan. Uh, should this gain approval, when this goes for uh, permitting, we will require an AS, an AS bill from a survey requiring ma- making sure that fifty foot is made.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Otherwise, um, I don't have an issue with it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else? Any other questions? Okay, if no one has an issue, would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the petition of Di Stefano Brothers. Their office is at four thirty-three Main Street, South Kingston for a dimension of variance under the zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking to construct a detached accessory structure. The living area size of the accessory apartment will be seven hundred fifty square feet, the maximum allowed. The applicant is also proposing to construct a covered entry and rear covered deck consisted of a hundred and sixty-two square feet and two hundred and fourteen square feet respectively. Covered porches are to be included as part of the maximum, seven hundred fifty square feet allowed for an accessory structure. The two covered porches consist of three hundred and seventy-six square feet and this exceeds the maximum allowed. Therefore, the relief is being sought in the amount of three hundred and seventy-six square feet over the maximum seven fifty under our section nine oh seven. The owner of the property is Ian and Lindsay Madam. And the property is at twenty-six East Hillway. Map fifty-five lot eighteen and we're in a R eighty zone. The applicant was, was uh, represented by Peter Di Stefano. He's uh, he's an in-town builder. And he indicates that his clients Ian and Lindsay are looking to build a place for their parents to come and live in the property, the proposed property for extended period of time. And they have a big house, but they also have a house full of children. And this structure will accommodate the needs of both the people living in the big structure, the main structure as well as the uh, parents who are visiting, giving them um, their privacy and their living space that they need, uh, being that it's one level. I presume they're elderly or whatever and the one level has better sense for them. Um, this board member is not really concerned about this. It's a big acreage property. It's four point two eight acres. This is a relatively small structure, given the land mass here. And it will be with uh, the map indicates it'll be fifty feet from the road. I understand there will be a um, addition or revision to the uh, the survey to indicate that. This is a petition that also is gonna need some uh, OWTS approval down the road as well as uh, tie-in to existing well or creation of a new well for the water resource. The uh, essentially they're requesting relief for their porches. I would find that the porches aren't as an egregious aren't as egregious to the zoning board as living space would. The living space is seven fifty. The porches make good sense because they cut, the roof will be covering both the front entry to provide them from weather as well as the back, uh, the rear porch, which is also covered. So I think visually, these are uh, smart looking uh, roof structures and they seem to be uh, in concert with the other properties in this area. And uh, I would tie in, of course, any approvals of the maps that were submitted in the drawing as well as uh, the outside approvals that are gonna be needed down the line. This is a request for a dimensional variance. Board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And it's not due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant. Again, I would point out this is a fairly large acreage of property and a fairly small structure in light of uh, the acreage and that the the relief really is not so much for living space as it, as it is for covered porch. Relief is still required, obviously, but because it's not extra living space, I won't find it as, uh, I don't find that as uh, an egregious uh, requirement under our zoning ordinance. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior, of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of applicant to realize a greater financial gain. There is testimony as to why they're doing this. Again, I would adopt that finding that the parents of the applicants will be living in this property over an extended period of time. Board finds that the grant of variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan. And again, this proposed structure appears to be consistent with the properties in this general area. This seems to be the least relief necessary in the hardships suffered by the owner of the property. If the demand for a certain variance is not granted, would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. With that said, I move that we grant the petition of Di Stefano Brothers.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Bernardo. Would somebody second it?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Cagnetta. Any discussion? Okay, if no discussion, let's vote. Okay, Mr. Bernardo. Okay, Mr. Cagnetta.
Aye.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Mark.
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak. Aye. Okay, motion passes. Uh, good luck, Mr. Di Stefano.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next one. Petition of Thomas L. Cabral, twelve forty Middle Bridge Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island for dimensional variance in the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to remove the existing deck around three sides of the dwelling and reconstruct it slightly larger than the existing. The entire existing structure and decks are within the rear building setback area.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, excuse me. We've lost your audio.
You've lost my audio?
Hmm.
Okay, hang on.
Rick, we could hear, yeah, we could hear it. It was just when you turned to the side. I think the mic couldn't pick it up.
Okay, when I turned to the side, well, it's gonna be tough to read if I can't turn to the side, guys, but uh, hang on, I forgot, I forgot where I was. Here we go. I'm gonna start right in the middle. Can you hear me now? The required setback from the rear property line is fifty feet. The proposed deck is nine point one feet from the rear property line. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, relief of forty point nine feet is requested. Lot size is two point two three acres. A dimensional variance is required for zoning ordinance, section four oh one, schedule of dimension regulations and nine oh seven standards of relief. The owner of the property is Thomas L. and uh, Jardine A. Cabral. Okay, premises located at twelve forty Middle Bridge Road, assessors map twenty-seven dash one, lot ten and zoned R eighty. Okay? All right, again, this is the petition of Thomas L. Cabral. Okay, twelve forty Middle Bridge Road. Okay? Okay, uh, is someone here for this petition?
I am, Thomas Cabral.
Okay, would you spell your name, sir?
Yeah, H O M A S, Thomas Cabral, C A B R A L.
Okay, sir, go ahead. Tell us what you want.
Well, I'm looking for relief so that we can replace the thirty-year-old deck that's wrapped around three sides of the house. And uh, we're gonna replace it with the same footprint. Um, I'd like to ask uh, Chris Palmer, who did the initial survey, to go over the uh, new deck particulars, if you don't mind.
Okay, Chris, uh, will you spell your name, please?
It's Christopher Palmer, C H R I S T O P H E R, Palmer, P A L M E R. I'm a professional land surveyor located at sixty-six Falcon Ridge Drive, exit of Rhode Island.
Okay, well, one thing, Christopher and you as well, Thomas, I don't think I swore yet. You both swear to tell the truth, hold the truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Christopher.
What, what we have here is it's a, it's a unique piece of property where the building was built um, completely in the rear setback. Um, the existing uh, dwelling, we're not proposing, he's not proposing any changes to the existing dwelling. What happened is the, the deck is aging, has some structural problems. You can see by the structural uh, designs that were submitted from a structural engineer um, to fix the problem. Uh, the, the only thing that the, we're proposing is, is just a one foot wider of the deck in the back because four feet wide by the time you add the railing would make the walkway just about a little over three, three and a half feet wide and it goes into his main entrance back there. So we're just proposing five feet wide to make it a little bit easier to, to get a refrigerator or some furniture into that back part of the house.
Okay, and, and it will be nine point one feet from the rear property line. That's what we're talking about now, right?
Yeah, that's at the end of the stairwell. So that's gonna be the worst uh,
Worst area.
Of relief that's necessary for it.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Uh, the existing deck, if you look at, at the plan, um, it's just changing from, it's just one foot in the, in the rear and we're basically just putting this thing right over the existing footprint.
Okay, all right.
Property is serviced by a septic system and a well. The hardship on this, on this is the house is already pre-existently non-conforming. Um, it's the way it was built. Um, it's not gonna change the integrity of the neighborhood at all.
Where is the well and septic? Where are the, where's the well and septic?
The, the well is on the southernly side of the property by the driveway and the septic is buried just in the tree line. It, it's hard to find. Um, I didn't, I had trouble finding, it says AP right there in the uh, it's like right there. Okay, that's the best place I could find it. It's a very steep slope from where the house is, the road. There probably is a sixty feet of elevation.
Good, all right, anything else?
Nope, that's, it's um, it's a pretty straightforward application.
Okay, all right, Mr. Cabral, anything else? Jess, can you get me them back on the picture here? There you go.
I think Chris covered it very well.
Okay.
It's all right. We just need to get that antique replaced.
Okay, so no, no other, no other testimony. Okay, all right, is, board members, questions for these gentlemen?
So I have a question. Um, this is Rob Cagnetta. Uh, the uh, back entrance of, you know, where the stairs are, i- is that the only way onto that deck? Were you extending that extra foot or so?
That's the existing stairwell that goes up onto the deck. And if, right in the back of the, the dwelling, right about in the center, right where it curls in, that's where the main entrance of the house is.
On the, on the backside of the property?
On the backside of the house. It's not on the front side. It's on the backside.
Okay, so, so basically that, that long lawn side is all view.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, so that would be the west side. Okay, so the east side now, but those stairs, they act, they, they can come into the house from the west side, though, I would think, or the east side, right, on the hillside?
The east side is the, is the, where there's the steep hill. Um, it's actually a walk, it's like a walkout. It starts to go down. Those boulder walls are, are holding up. Uh, so the house is at the top of the slope and then it goes down uh, towards Middle Bridge Road. The slope does.
And that, those stairs are in the same location as existing?
Yes, they are in the same exact location as the existing stairs.
Just bigger?
Yep, just, just that one, it's just that one foot wider.
One foot wider and it looks like you're putting in a landing halfway?
Yeah, it's a little bit wider at the bottom.
Okay.
Okay, all right, any other?
That's part of the relief. I'm sorry, that's part of the relief going to the nine, that nine foot one is part of the relief.
Yeah, that's the worst, that's the most relief necessary is actually for the bottom stair of the stairwell.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right, any other questions for these gentlemen, board members? Okay, gentlemen, do you have anything else to add? Mr. Palmer, Mr. Cabral?
It was good.
No? All right, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
No one has raised their hand. Again, if you're calling in by phone, it's star nine um, to raise hand and then star six to mute, unmute. But no one's raised their hand.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cagnetta, do you have a question? No, okay, all right, board members, anyone have an issue with this?
No.
Anyone? Okay, someone want to make a motion then?
I'll do it. So I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the petition of uh, Thomas L. Cabral, um, as written in by the chair. Uh, this is a four dimensional variance required uh, per our zoning ordinance, section four zero one and section nine oh seven. The uh, petitioner, uh, Mr. Cabral, uh, passed off uh, the explanation to Mr. Palmer, uh, who has uh, surveyed the property and uh, the location of the building. Um, this is a, a very unique uh, property where we have two point two acres, over two point two acres, um, on a zone, uh, R eighty.
um, on a zone uh, R eighty lot. And the location of the building is nested all the way to the backside of the property, the west side of the property. Uh, where the existing is about uh, eleven feet from the property line. Um, the uh, Mr. Cabral and uh, the surveyor, Mr. Palmer, uh, described uh, the need for a new deck surrounding the building. Uh, the footprint of the deck on both the east and south sides will stay the same. Um, and it is the west side uh, that is encroaching the property line. Um, that is uh, the, the request for relief. They are extending it from a four feet, uh, three feet rather to of, I'm sorry, four feet rather to five feet. And that is to accommodate uh, space for movement of uh, household items, everything from larger equipment to uh, uh, other appliances and such. Um, they're also widening the stairs, uh, flaring them out uh, to the uh, east where uh, they will end about nine point one feet from the property line. Um, this property is on Middle Bridge Road. Um, and it is a uh, very steep uh, property. And is uh, landscaped um, to accommodate the, the steep drop. Um, the petitioner uh, submitted a series of uh, surveys and plans, we have a plot uh, plan radius map as well as the uh, engineer survey uh, by uh, Mr. Palmer that uh, was completed on five uh, May fourteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, they also have a schematic of the structural plans uh, that, that show um, the size of the framing. Um, and then they also have uh, locations of uh, major framing members and footings. Um, this is a dimensional variance, and this dimensional variance um, we find that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the structure on the land and is not due to the characteristics of uh, the surrounding area. Um, this is not due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant. Um, and uh, this is because as stated, it is, the house is nested uh, to the furthest uh, western point of the uh, property. Uh, we find that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant um, and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize a greater financial gain. This is all about safe access uh, and reconstructing uh, existing. Um, this will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area or impair the purpose or uh, intent of our comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance. Um, and uh, that is because uh, this, uh, the request is on the backside of the property. Um, there are also no objections by, by neighbors. This is the least relief necessary uh, for uh, safe access to the building. Um, and then we find that uh, the hardship suffered by the owner uh, if this were not granted, uh, the dimensional variance uh, would, would be more than a mere inconvenience. Um, because they need to replace their deck, uh, no conditions, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Cagnetta, would someone second?
Second.
Okay, second by, I think, Mr. Daniels, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, if no discussion, let's have a vote, okay, Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak, aye, okay, motion passes unanimously, good luck, sir, or gentleman, okay, have a nice night. Okay, uh, for next, that's the petitions uh, uh, we're on for, remember, next Wednesday at seven o'clock. Uh, please understand, I understand, uh, Mr. Mark, you can't attend, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so please, Mr. Rosen, you have to be there, everybody's gotta be, we need Mr. Rosen, Mr. Cagnetta, Mr. Bernardo and Mr. Daniels and myself, uh, seven o'clock, will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May twenty seventh, twenty twenty meeting, this is Mr. Mark.
Okay, will someone second that?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Cagnetta, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, okay, Amy, anything else, or Jessica?
Not for me.
How about you, Wayne? Nothing, you're okay, okay, having that in mind, okay, will someone make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Mr. Daniels, will someone second it?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, I'll see you all next week, hey, Amy? Amy, could you call me tomorrow sometime, I have a question for you?
Yes, will do.
Anytime, thank you.
Alright, good night.
Thanks, good night.
Alright, everybody.